Welcome to this special work session of the Monroe County Council. It's 5:32 PM on Tuesday, August 31st. And we are called to order. I think we probably see all of our staff, our wonderful staff. We've got council members here. We've got department heads. I know Ms. Wiltz is on the road, probably won't be able to join us tonight. But we won't be conducting any regular business tonight. We'll engage in some important discussion concerning Monroe County's 2022 budget. We have just a few items on the agenda tonight. We'll first look at the 2022 budget requests. And we'll have some very important information presented to us by Councilmember Kim and Council Administrator Kim Schell. And then next, we'll see if we can try to get a better sense of how we want to address the recommendations that were delivered to us through the classification and compensation study performed by Wagner Erwin Shealy. And I'm sure you all recall, we've already had two extensive discussions in previous public meetings on this topic. So my hope is that we can get a sense from the council tonight and see if we want these recommendations to be included in the 2022 budget, either in part or in full. Or the other option would be essentially to set it aside for 2022 and potentially address it in a future year. So we'll discuss that more here in a little bit. And again, we're not committing ourselves anything tonight, but hopefully we can get a straw poll sort of sense for how we want to move forward based on the information that we have today. Okay, so let's do a quick roll call of council members that are present here tonight. Councilmembers, please unmute your microphones and state that you're present when I call your name. Mr. Deckard.
Here.
Ms. Hawke.
Here.
Mr. Iverson.
Here.
Mr. McKim.
Here.
Ms. Munson.
Here.
Ms. Wiltz. And Ms. Wiltz is not present, as I stated earlier. Okay, so thank you. We have a quorum of our members that are present and will now proceed with the remaining items on our agenda. Up next is adoption of our agenda. The agenda we'll be working from tonight and that we'll adopt is currently posted on the Monroe County Government website. Any potential changes to the agenda will be noted now. Are there any members who would like to amend our agenda for this evening? If so, please raise your hand. Yes, Ms. Hawke?
I didn't see anything about the Monroe County Fire District. And since this is the final date by which they're supposed to be getting us information, I just want to make sure we cover that so that we don't miss that deadline in any form.
They have not submitted anything to us. Hmm.
What, nobody?
I find that... It doesn't come to me. It comes to the auditor's office. So I requested their 4B, but I have yet to see their 4B. And I was under the impression, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but tomorrow is the deadline. Is that correct, Bree?
I thought it was...
Thank you.
Well, nothing like...
Tomorrow is the deadline. Yes.
I know that they did send it because I sent a copy of it that they sent to me. I sent out to one of the other council members, so.
They haven't forwarded anything to my attention with regards to their 4B, so.
Oh, well, no, I didn't say, I have not seen that 4B.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, hopefully we'll have more information soon on all of that. We'll get that distributed. Did that address your concern there, Ms. Hawke? Okay, okay. Are there any changes or edits that council members would like to propose to our agenda tonight? Doesn't appear so. We'll entertain a motion to adopt.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, any questions or discussion? Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote to adopt the agenda.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Hawke?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
And Councilor Wiltz is not present. Pushing past six to zero.
All right, very good. So up next, Michelle, how would you like to proceed? Would you like Mr. McKim to present first, the information on our 4Bs?
I believe so. I think that might just kind of set the tone and then we can just go into some of the departmental details that I have that I'd like to go over.
Okay, terrific. And...
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McKim.
Yeah, no, that makes sense because this is basically the big picture. And then Michelle can kind of drill down into the developmental requests we've received. So I'm going to share my screen. And what I'm sharing is the draft 4B that that is essentially just, you know, for people who don't know what we're talking about when we say 4B. It's essentially, it is a state prescribed form. Now, I've modified it solely for analytical purposes so that this isn't something that gets filed. This is something we use for our own information. But basically provides a financial statement through the end of this year and then through all the, all the way to the end of next year, the budget year that we're preparing for. So the bottom line that we talk about in this statement is this line 18, the very last line, which is called operating balance. And reality, what that means is at the end of next year, after we've taken all the revenues we think we're going to take in and spent all the money that we think we were going to spend, that's how much money is left at the end of that year. So that's the way to interpret that. Now, I want to talk about a couple of the important points that we're going to see here. So I know what, what you see is just a splash of numbers here. But as everybody knows, we appropriate budgets for what, about 60 different funds? I've only included, I think, the ones that are generally the most challenging for us to budget for. That is the six funds that make up the frozen civil levy. That is the general fund, election, health, aviation, reassessment, and cumulative bridge. That's, again, we call that the frozen levy. And so I have a column representing the total for the frozen levy. And then also the public safety lit and what's now called the lit special purpose that those of us old timers call juvenile, still think of as the juvenile coet. But it's basically a special income tax used for juvenile expenses. So the, pretty much the top rows from row one through nine are what is still expected to happen this year. And all of that information that I populated in the cells here I've received from the auditor's office. So if we have any detailed questions about where those numbers came from, we're going to want to direct those to the auditor's office. But what, what that essentially shows us is at the end of this year, what are we starting our budget year with? What are we ending this year? What, what are we starting our, our budget with next, next year? And I don't know whether, Michelle, you may actually have an answer on the additional appropriations. I just wanted to kind of call attention to some of the more interesting numbers. We do have still half a million dollars of anticipated additional appropriations or additional appropriations that we've already met made after June 30th that make up that number. So I, do you have any more detail on that? Is there a big one or anything we need to know about?
No, we, the ones that we just did for the commissioner's office were the larger ones. So I think we have a few coming in. Hit, hit and miss, but they're not, they weren't as large as the commissioner with regards to the PSAP. Or not that, but public safety.
PS Lit. Yeah, and you can see that there's a very large number. That's $716,000 as an additional appropriation in the public safety lit. We've already done that. We approved that in July, but it appears on this line six because we did it after June 30th. So in any case, again, this, this line eight is what, oh, I'm sorry, line nine is what we start the, the next year's budget year with. Then this is where it starts to get interesting. So I have a couple of lines here labeled 2021 levy, 2022% increase, and 2022 levy calculated. That's our property tax levy for the frozen levy. And the 2021 is our, obviously, our levy for 2021. We know that the maximum levy growth quotient was 4.3% for this year. So that leaves us with this calculated levy row, which all I did is literally multiply or increase each one of these lines by 4.3%. So that gives us a total. Now, remember that we, as the council, can shift levies within that maximum levy. So basically, we have complete freedom, with one exception, to move around these numbers that we see in this 2022 levy calculated, as long as the total ends up at this number and it's in orange, $24,288,576. So that's, that'll be our job as we come to the end of budget, to shuffle around those numbers to be able to make sure that we have the appropriate cash to be able to fund the budgets that, that we appropriate. The one exception is cumulative bridge. That is a rate controlled fund, not a levy controlled fund. So what it actually brings in is whatever the net assessed value is, which is kind of in the lower left-hand corner of the spreadsheet, whatever the net assessed value is times 0.0231% tax rate. And you'll notice that that number, $1.8 million, is actually a little larger than the $1.75 million that the 4.3% max, maximum levy growth quotient would have generated. What that means is because the, the net assessed value is so large this year, that is, our property values are so strong that that's actually generated a little bit more than the maximum levy growth quotient levy for Q bridge. The problem is that that, that eats into the rest of our maximum levy. So Q bridge is actually going to grow, assuming we don't reduce the rate, is actually going to grow a little bit more than that 4.3% and therefore reduce the other numbers by a little bit, you know, by a little bit, by, you know, about $80,000. So that's, you know, we certainly have that ability to reduce that rate if we wanted to keep their levy within the maximum levy growth quotient. But if we do nothing, we're going to eat into about $80,000 levy there. We also have the property tax cap impact, which the DLGF was pretty minimal in their specifics there. So I showed all of it in the general fund. We have the flexibility to move it around for what it's worth. Then, then we come to the lit. And the lit, so you'll remember that the, the local income tax, our total county take of local income tax is down about 4.6% this year or projected for 2022. So that there is a real net decrease in local income tax. In addition, because of the substantial increase in property tax from the fire district, that we have seen a shift in lit away from the county, in fact, and away from all the other, the city and all the other taxing units in favor of the fire protection district. So we've actually seen a bigger decrease in lit than just that 4.6%. So you'll see, for example, in the general fund, we are going to see a decrease from about $14.5 million to $13.36 million in lit. You know, that kind of hurts. Then in the public safety, we are also going to see a decrease. Now, the shift to the fire district doesn't affect us in public safety. What does affect us is, A, the decrease in, overall, the 4.6% decrease overall in collections, but also the the fact that we're, the budget, if to fully fund the PSAP budget involves an increase in the PSAP rate, which means all the other recipients of PS Lit, their, their receipts decrease. So we're seeing a reduction in PS Lit from about $3.2 million to $2.8 million. And again, that is actually going to be greater than that 4.6 million or 4.6% because of that increase in the PSAP rate. Then finally, in our lit special purpose, which is, like I said, the, what we used to call the juvenile coet. There, we are only going to see a small decrease. In fact, we're only going to see that 4.6% decrease because we get it all. We're not, we don't have to share it when anybody else, we, we just see us, that 4.6% overall receipts decrease in the, in the lit for, for the juvenile special purpose lit. So that leads us to the bottom line in 2000, you know, I've actually got to type, Bo, sorry. Actually, 2022 revenues. Then we have our, our budget estimate. And I, I just took the numbers that Michelle provided. She's going to talk about the budget request in more detail. So this is just the big picture. These numbers should match dollar for dollar, what we see on the information that Kim has spent weeks gathering. And then, so then that leads us to basically our two bottom lines. And I have two bottom lines here. The first bottom line is labeled net 2022 revenue. That's not required by the, the 4B. It doesn't have an official 4B statement number. What that is, is simply the, the, that's essentially stating whether or not in this year, we are in the budget year, 2022, we're in balance with respect to budgeted requests versus budgeted expenditures. Now, that's, you know, in reality, that's not what we're going to wind up, we're probably not going to wind up that way. And in fact, Michelle just did a report for us that showed our revergents, our unspent appropriations for 2020. In general, we usually see about $2 million worth of revergents in the, in the general fund and frozen levy. And actually, it looks like that's exactly where we are this year. So in reality, this is probably, you know, these are conservative numbers by about $2 million, which I know is a lot. But of course, we can't, we can't guarantee it. If the money is, is appropriated, it's allowed to be spent. But in any case, what that, what that tells us is that in the frozen levy, we're at about $841,000 over requests versus projected revenue. So that means in deficit. And then in public safety lit, about $546,000 in requests over projected revenue. Now, the special purpose lit is still in surplus by four, almost half a million dollars. And then that finally leads us to our operating balance, which is the sum total of all the revenues, projected revenues and all the projected expenditures. And we often also like to measure the operating balance as a percentage of our, of our budget. The auditor's office and tends to have recommendations for maintenance of, of a particular operating balance. That essentially is our reserves are to maintain cash flow. And as you can see, this would lead us, if we just adopted the budget and the, the levies as they are right now, we would have probably too high an operating balance in general fund. But operating balances that are insufficient in several of the other funds, including election, where we'd actually be in the negative if, if all the money was spent. So that, that means that, you know, when all is said and done, we'll need to tweak the, the levies to make sure that we have the appropriate operating balances in each of these funds, as long as they all add up to the bottom line of, of that 24.288 million. As you can see, even though we'd be spending, we, this, this budget would theoretically be a deficit budget for public safety lit, we would be, still have a substantial operating balance in public safety lit. And that's even after spending that almost three quarters of a million dollars in additional appropriations for capital items earlier this, you know, last month. And then again, we have a more than generous operating balance in the, the special purpose, the juvenile lit. So this is just kind of the big picture that everything else gets slotted into. And so, you know, I'd love to have any, any discussion on, on the big picture here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. McKim. Excellent information. Councilmember Hawke, did you have a question?
As a statement to begin with, thank you, thank you, thank you, Councilmember McKim. What, just as a general reminder, that, that operating balance at the end of the year is the money that carries us through until the June settlement. So it isn't like if that's extra money because we have, that, that's assuming that we're included in your statements, their financial statement. That's assuming that we have that false settlement in there, which, you know, we have seen times we didn't get it, but it should be in there before the end of the year.
Yeah, and that's that line two, property taxes to be collected. So that's, that's supposed, that's representing what we're still supposed to receive by the, by the end of the year in property tax.
Mm-hmm. We just don't want anybody to think, oh, well, that's a lot of extra money sitting there and then operating because we hate, we know we have to save back whatever we need to, to get through to, you know, to June settlement, whatever that amount would be.
Mr. Iverson and then Ms. Munson.
Yeah, Mr. McKim, a lot of talk has been about the American Recovery Plan and ARPA dollars. How are those represented in the spreadsheet we see before us?
Okay, great question. The answer is not at all. So that, as, as we all know, that, that we have a substantial ARPA allocation and one of the allowable, one of the four pillars of usage is for, is to make up for revenue losses. And those revenue law, the revenues, we could actually spend some time talking about this if you're interested, but the, the revenue losses part is, is interesting because the way that the Treasury, the US Department of Treasury has a very specific way of calculating those revenue losses. And that's what we hired FSG to do our, our report on. The FSG report draft was sent out to everybody. I also did a, a spreadsheet that's in the, which I'll go ahead and show it if you're interested.
I know I am. And I imagine the people watching are too.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's an important, it's a very important subject. So let me, what, what I did is I took the, sorry, the FSG report that they, that they gave. And basically, they went through every single fund and looked at all the, every single revenue line from the, from 2019, which is our baseline year, and 2020, which is the first year we have to compare. And they calculated all of the revenue lines according to the rules of Treasury. And I hope, you know, I, I wouldn't even come close to being able to explain the rules as to what counts as revenue for the purposes of revenue loss and what doesn't. And it's not, you know, it's not fund by fund or category by category. The, our ARPA funding works that they sum up the entire allowable revenue for 2019. They sum up the entire allowable revenue by 2020. And then, and then escalate the 222 or 2020 allowable revenue by 4.1%. So in other words, revenue loss is not calculated as 2019 versus 2020. It's calculated as almost a counterfactual, what 2020 should have been had we not had COVID. And 4.1% is that magic number. And so what, what FSG did, at least in their report that they distributed, is just gave us the bottom line, basically that, sorry, the bottom line that essentially our baseline in 2019 was about a little over 80 million. Our 2020 plus 4.1% was $83,820. And that difference is, which is about two point, almost two and a half million dollars, is our official revenue loss. So by the law, we are allowed to appropriate up to that amount of money and use that to fund county government operations out of that ARPA total. Now, of course, you know, what comes out of the ARPA total, if we use anything for operations, then it's unusable for other purposes. I mean, there's a fixed pot, but we could use theoretically two, almost 2.5 million dollars of ARPA just for essentially any county government operations that, that we want to. Now, I do want to point out one thing that's kind of interesting on this is that in reality, you know, our, our 2019 revenue, according to the Treasury calculations, is about $80.5 million. And our actual for 2020 is $81.4 million. So we didn't actually lose money. We did not actually see a real revenue loss. What we did see, though, is a loss against 2020 plus that 4.1% escalation factor. So that's where we get our, that loss of 2.5 million dollars. Now, what I did is I, I took the FSG report with just, which listed everything for 2019 and then everything from 2020. I copied it down and put it all in a tabular form so you can actually see every single fund and what, what revenue was lost from 20, or what, what the changes were from 2019 to 2020. And you know, honestly, most of the results are probably exactly what you would expect. The biggest losses were in inkeeper's tax. And, you know, the, some degree, you know, there's, there's some food and beverage loss, but that's the, the losses were in things that we would, that would not surprise any of us. Inkeeper's tax, we did see some motor vehicle highway decreases, parks, non-reverting operating, which is basically like their shelter rentals and program fees and that sort of thing. Yeah, whopping a pretty large decrease there. Yeah, a lot, like convention center.
Center.
A pre-trial diversion took a pretty big hit. And, you know, to some degree, it's not a bad thing because it really meant that, that fewer people were getting tickets, fewer people getting arrested, so for divertible offenses. There were some other quirks that we're still, still trying to resolve. One of the things that I thought was kind of, oh, let's see, it's 1,1200, that was kind of odd. And it turns out, I believe, you know, this, this is just a difference in categorization of the revenues in the public defender supplemental. And the auditor's office may want to explain this, or they may not. But basically, the, all of that PD supplemental state revenue did not count, at least not according to the, the, the ARPA formula for 2019, but it counted in 2020. So in other, that actually decreased the amount of revenue loss that, that we had seen according to this formula. If they had properly accounted for the public defender supplemental in 2019, we'd actually see another $700,000 in lost revenue that we could use for county government operations from ARPA funding. So, you know, I encourage everybody to look at the spreadsheet. It is in, in your Dropbox. And I'm, we're still researching some of the specific items. Yeah, still, still researching some of these, these specific items. But the short answer to Mr. Iverson's question is that right now, this does not represent any, any ARPA funding, but yet we would be able to use up to that 2.4 or something million dollars to spend on, on county government operations.
May I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
So the public will be able to see some of these ARPA expenditures and revenues in the 2023 budget? Or subsequent budgets after that?
Um, so you're, you're talking about maybe specific projects that we would, that we would undertake. Probably, we would do those as additional appropriations. So they would see those throughout the year. So for example, if, you know, next month, we decided to spend a certain amount on a housing initiative or something like that, they would see that as an additional appropriation, not as a, not, not as a budgeted expense.
Excellent, thank you.
Ms. Rice, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the, the guidelines from the feds were that all of that money has to be kept in one specific fund. And that's how it's kind of tracked and that's, that's where the transparency is. So if anybody has any questions about ARPA expenses into the future, it's kept in, in one centralized fund that can easily be tracked. Is that right? An audit?
Exactly right. Yes, that's exactly right. And we, there has been a fund created by the commissioners. They, they did pass the ordinance. As you know, the plan is yet to be developed, but all of the funding will be spent from, or all the, all the expenses will come out of that one fund.
And Mr. Iverson, I, I And Mr. Iverson, I I think that, uh, you know, one of the things that we're kind of kicking around too is just having, you know, we're a standing agenda item at each of our meetings going forward, once the plan is created for ARPA, where we would hear those appropriation requests. And then we probably also need a report at least once a month, maybe um, you know, on on uh, you know, kind of ongoing uh expenses and things out of that fund. So we're we're coming up with the best uh plan for that too. But um, yeah, thanks for thanks for mentioning that because it is a an important part. We want to make sure that, you know, that's very transparent, the public can access that information uh as as needed. Uh, Ms. Munson was next, and then Mr. Deckard.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Counselor McKim, this is uh very important and much appreciation as always. I have a uh question about whether we might be able to use uh another another line that would be the ideal operating balance for December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two to see um, to see what we need to uh adjust. I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I I I agree. Um, and I'll 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 put that in there as a placeholder. Um, I, you know, I will uh definitely defer to the auditor's office on what number, what what that number should be. But no, I think that's a good idea, and we have talked, we have talked about that before. That's.
Yeah.
And and, you know, to some degree, it 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 it's interesting. Like Counselor Counselor Hawke mentioned, you know, that's our the money that we need to uh to be able to start the next year with. Um, you know, to some degree, that's become a little bit less important just because um because of the lit, because the lit gets paid out monthly rather than every every six months. So to some degree, we have a little more flexibility than we used to have. But um, but yeah, it's uh, I think that's a very good idea. So.
Okay. And secondly, is uh, is this draft four B uh in Dropbox for us to look at?
Yes, and and Michelle sent out the link to the council earlier today. So just follow that link if you want.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Deckard.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Jeff. This is, I always enjoy watching you explain this and go through this. It it's and and every year I learn something new that I did not the year before, and I'm grateful for it. I just wanted to ask you a couple questions and and get your thoughts, and and my questions aren't committing me to anything, but I did want to hear your your thoughts and opinions. And number one, I I think I've heard you say this before, but I want to make sure that I'm clear, and I think for those in the public, it might help them as well. Do you think that this, the the revenues that we're looking at i- in these uh figures represent the core of of maybe uh the most difficult portion of the pandemic? And by that, I I would just measure it by uh employment uh as a factor. Do you think maybe that it represents that that most difficult time for us as far as revenue, or is there um some other worries that we should be considering in that regard?
Um, I think next year is also um still of of concern. Um, you know, we we still don't know fully where where lit is going to go. There's still some pandemic effect this year, so it's still going to show up in in, you know, the two thousand and twenty-three lit. Uh, and in addition, you know, this four point three percent on the maximum levy growth quotient, that's a really good number. I mean, that's that's a very strong number because we, you know, we lost a a couple of low numbers, and we had a couple of really good years of economy. Um, next year, I think there'll be a good year that'll drop off. So it wouldn't surprise me if the MLGQ dropped next year. Then the following year, we have a bad year. So, you know, it it's it could oscillate a little bit, but I I, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go so far as to say we're out of the woods.
Okay. And I guess the second part is, I know that about a year and a half ago, we started heavily talking about various scenarios and and sort of playing out um how this could end up. And I guess the question is, do you have any thoughts you you want to share on when beyond ARPA dollars and perhaps not, perhaps regardless of ARPA dollars or or with considering them, that rainy day funds become a discussion for the county and and certainly this council to talk about?
Well, you know, the way I look at it, so rainy day, uh, you know, we still have uh right now a balance of approximately nine point two million dollars in rainy day. We we transferred five hundred thousand dollars to the Trails Project. It's not technically a loan, but we expect to get it back. Um, so, you know, we're still going to wind up the end of the year pretty close to ten million dollars in in rainy day. I guess the the way I look, honestly, the way I look at it is that that rainy day fund for the moment is we've got to look at that as our, let's not be like Owen County. Um, I mean, I hate to say it that way, but let's not be like Owen County uh fund there that that kind of gives us a backstop. So, you know, we're fortunate enough right now that we have two backstops. We have the ARPA funding, uh, which is, you know, one of the main purposes of that is to acco- you know, accommodate government government operations uh uh due to lost uh revenue from the pandemic. Um, but, you know, I I certainly don't think we're anywhere near the point at which we we would want to consider um transferring out of rainy day for operations. I I I think that's our backstop in case things get wor- really do get worse.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Uh, Counselor Hawke?
Um, yes, uh, something that I discussed with you earlier today, Captain McKim, but I wasn't absolutely certain of it. A couple of things, uh, having to do with that extra pay period that we had to budget for. And I don't think we took it out of rainy day because we had a a pretty hefty cash on hand. So maybe that's why I was looking at thinking that's the reason why those balances went down so far. So it was that. And also because that income tax came in, uh, our projection was uh the revenue that was collected uh for only ten months rather than this year, the the numbers look like it was collected for fourteen months. So we could expect it to go down. And then the following year, if everything stayed um equal, it would it would cure itself in the following year. But of course, we never know because we don't know what the other parties might be doing or anything. But uh, am I wrong on that? Did we not cover that extra pay period out of our cash?
Yes, that that's correct. We didn't do a big appropriation out of rainy day or anything. We just, every every fund co- covered its own extra payroll. So yes, we did definitely spend more on, we spent that out of our our cash for each of the funds that that carried the salaries.
And that was a huge, huge.
Yeah.
Expanse.
Over a million dollars.
That we were able to do that.
Absolutely. Uh, how often does that happen? Is that once every seven years? Is that?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay, okay.
I know, it's totally weird. I had to do the, I I literally had to map out every single year and the fifty-two weeks, and it was, it was crazy. I I finally kind of became clear, although I think it was actually maybe only ten years this last time because it also depends on what day of the week vis a vis our payroll.
Geez, yeah. Well, uh, any other? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, and then, you know, as as um Ca- Counselor Hawke, I think this was one of the things we were talking about earlier today. Also, the, you know, the auditor's office um recommended a lower uh shifting some of the property tax levy from some of these other funds into the general fund, basically so we don't have a whole bunch of cumulative funds. You know, the whole idea is that we don't want every fund in the frozen levy to have this enormous cash balance. We want to kind of keep our reserves to a- a- as few funds as as we can. And I think we've kind of followed that philosophy. So we have, you know, the frozen levy, but then we have the general fund that kind of collects a lot of the extra reserves. And then when that but balance got too high, we transferred to the rainy day fund. And we did that. I I we, you know, we've we've made regular transfers to the rainy day fund whenever we've had.
Yeah.
Extra extra cash buildup in in the general fund. So I just kind of wanted, you know, and Michelle will talk about budget. I just, you know, kind of wanted to make sure we all saw the the big picture here and that, you know, this budget that that she's showing here doesn't even include any progress towards the WIS study. So if we're going to adopt that, we just need to make sure we're at least clear-eyed about where we are um overall in finances.
Could you uh remind us what what's going on with the with the lit special purpose and the and the high uh operating balance there in terms of percentage of the budget?
The money is just bred, the the tax rate is bringing in more money than the.
What we're using.
Departments need to spend, yeah. So, I mean, you know, one option is we could always lower that tax rate.
Yeah. Well, something I'm sure we'll we'll want to discuss when when those budgets are are presented for sure. Uh, Ms. Hawke, did you have a question or a comment about that?
Yes, um, at the time that we increased it, I remember a great deal of discussion. And uh Judge Galvin made it clear, if this brings in more than what is reasonable to operate and is needed, then's a time we can go ahead and reduce it. Um, you know, we wouldn't want to do it by much, just wait and see how it works out. But it might be something we'd consider because it seems that's growing way.
Yeah, seems like we're getting pretty close to the point where we'd want to talk about it uh a little bit more. Well, um, Mr. McKim, I can't thank you enough for this. I, you know, I walked through the Indiana Memorial Union, and I see the paintings on the wall by TC Steel, and, you know, I would always think, you know, what would it be like to watch him do those landscape paintings uh back then? But I think I kind of get a little bit of a taste of that when I see Jeff McKim work in spreadsheets and talk through budgets, truly a master uh of this art. And can't thank you enough, what an asset and a gem uh for Monroe County Government. And.
Well, I I appreciate that, but I will say that Ms. Gregory and Michelle so produced a huge amount of the inputs for for these for this as well. So I just try to put the 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 gilded frame around it, but uh but, you know, they really did the uh the work in producing the underlying numbers, so.
Well, thanks to everybody for all the work on this. This is so helpful as we get into these very, very important discussions that we'll be having uh in September. A lot of meetings in September, especially around budgets, and this kind of kicks all that off. So um, all right, are we ready to move on to our next agenda item? Do we have uh and I, Michelle has some information that uh will be presented here to us. So take it away, uh, Michelle, whenever you're ready.
All right. Thank you, Council. Um, I sent an email out uh late last night with regards to the uh all funds budgets. And in in that email, I um gave you some heads up on certain things that I thought uh you needed to look at. And in particular, uh, one of them was for the Health Department. They are requesting that their personnel and their, whoops, hold on, in their uh eleven fifty-nine, their health fund, um, they're requesting uh that their personnel go from thirty-five hours to forty. Now, I did not include that in the all funds worksheet, but I did submit to you for review the health fund budget so that you could see comparatively what amount they were needing. And I believe um Counselor McKim used in his draft four B, the forty-hour uh projections uh with regards to the amounts in that for Form Four B. Um, we have three departments that are making requests for additional personnel for next year. Um, one of them is the Highway Department. They're requesting an an administrative assistant in stormwater. Um, this position has, does not have a a job description, and so she's completing paperwork to go to PAC for that position. Uh, another position is from the Sheriff's Office. They are requesting an additional administrative assistant in their Public Safety Lit Fund. Um, they brought this request last year uh for the two thousand and twenty-one budget, uh, but Council asked them to not add anything for two thousand and twenty-one and to bring it back for two thousand and twenty-two. So that is on their request. And then um, the Health Department has requested administrative assistant in the Health Fund, and we have already gone through and um done the job description review um through uh PAC, um, not through PAC, sorry, but through the council. That was brought to the entire council. We did receive the review back from WIS. And so I've put all that information into the Health Budget as well with the correct funding. So that's the three that I know of that stood out to me. Um, the assessor um is asking for a permanent part-time position, even though um we don't um, it's not full-time, but we do request that um when we did this uh WIS study that they have a job description. And so I'm gonna be touching base with the assessor's office and on moving forward with getting a job description for that permanent part-time position, and that is in their Sales Disclosure Fund. So uh, that's all I have with regards to things that stood out a little bit on um the all funds budgets. Counselor Hawke, you have a question?
Yes, this where you would add on uh those that have already been funded during this year because it's going to be a new uh coming out next year, be something new and that was not at the beginning of this year.
Those have already been included. Is that what you're asking? Have they been included in the two thousand and twenty?
I want to see the amount that we increased from the beginning of the year that we've increased that we'd be pulling out of the following year's funds because that's what happens when you start adding people during the year. And I'm not saying you put it on there, but may put it on someplace where we can see what what we have done.
Okay.
If I recall, I think some of those positions had been put into the budget, but we just didn't hire last year. Was that right?
There were two of them uh in the Health Department that uh the Health Department requested, and you asked for them to be pulled out because they didn't even have job descriptions, and we didn't know how to classify them. So those have been added for uh because we did get all that information back from WIS. So those have been added to the two thousand and twenty-one budgets and are currently in in place. So that's two that I know of. Um, we have also added a um mechanic um in the highway. We've also added a one, it was something else in stormwater.
Yeah, inspector.
Inspector. Um.
And the county commissioners had quite a uh additional this year.
They they, yeah, was that the fleet? Did we add the fleet this year or was that last year? I'll have to look on that one.
Okay, so so Ms. Ridge is saying that the highway didn't add a mechanic. It was the commissioners. That's right. Thank you, Ms. Ridge.
Okay. Oh, no, they added the um maintenance technician, maintenance technician is what we just added. Sorry.
Okay. Mr. McKim?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I I I did include the higher number for health, but can you, did you happen to calculate what the difference was between the thirty-five and the what the impact of that that request was?
Yeah, it's on that uh the Health Department. Um.
I just have too many spreadsheets open, so.
Yeah, let me get to Dropbox.
Hold on, I've got it pulled up here.
There we go.
Michelle, do you want to walk me through?
Yeah, scroll down just a little bit. The difference, stop right there. The difference is between the eight hundred and ninety, three seventy, and the seven seventy-nine for salaries, if that's what you want, or you can go to the bottom. for salaries, if that's what you want, or you can go to the bottom.
Oh, I see. Okay, eight ninety versus seven, seven eighty for for salaries. Okay, so about a hundred ten thousand dollars in salary, okay. And then the other question I have, where did we wind up? Where did we come down on full-time health, dental life?
I just spoke with Margie, Margie, sorry about that, Angie. Was that yesterday? I believe that was yesterday, and we're going to hold at eleven thousand per position. She's hoping to be able to drop that number. But she's very comfortable with where she's at right now with requesting that amount. And that should be just fine for our full-time self-insurance fund.
Great, thank you.
I'm wondering if we might also ask, Angie, is there a way to determine if county employee vaccination rates could reduce health insurance costs in any way? Do they take any of that for COVID vaccination rates? They would take any of that into consideration? I don't know, but just thought we might check into it. Any other questions? So is that everything that you had for us, Michelle?
No, just with that one part. Sorry.
The unique and one-time request, yes.
Right, and so, yes, the next thing was the unique and one-time request, and we had three departments submit that. I had them go through the process because they, some of it was capital. And so I had them fill out paperwork and submit it to the commissioners to see if any of it would come out of CUMCAP. And I know with the Health Department and some of the Parks Department, some of theirs were being considered and was incorporated into the CUMCAP. As well as, I believe, the Parks Department requested some mowers, which Ms. Purdy incorporated into the bond. So I know that that was a part of her request was that, so. Let's see, I want to say the, one of the major things that the Health Department is asking for is approximately twelve thousand dollars for a ground penetrating radar. And that's to help them locate septic fields more efficiently and accurately. So I'm, that's all I have, you know, notes-wise, and then there was some other items that can't be covered, you know, so that it will come out of their, you know, supplies and that kind of stuff. So those have been incorporated into their budgets. I did send you in a separate email their requests and for you to review. But I went ahead and had them go ahead and put it in their budgets, so. I know that the Treasurer has asked for an amount
Thirty some thousand or something?
Yeah, for thirty, yeah, thirty thousand, and it's to cover the cost of moving things to microfilm, and that's for the years nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand and nine. And then her plan is then to ask another for the twenty twenty-three budget, moving forward to get it from twenty-ten to current. So and that was her one-time request, so I had her put that into her contractual line. So you'll see an increase in her contractual line there. I think that's it, and then we had the in the Parks Department, the Parks Department, where'd that one go? There it is. Parks Department, their request was for, in the supply lines, you'll see an increase of twenty-five thousand because they would like to replace eight of their twenty-eight goals, because some of them are between twenty-five and thirty years old and they need to be replaced. And then the remainder is in contractual. And they have broken down, which I, like I said, I submitted to you earlier and separately, the reason for the increase in the contractual amount. And it's so that they can, they're, they are doing a five-year master plan. What is that? Unsecure assets and equipment at the Carst Farm Park Maintenance Building. You know, treekeeper software, you know, that kind of thing. So it's more contractual. And that was something that couldn't be utilized in CUMCAP, so she's asked for a large amount in that.
Okay, let's see if there's any questions or discussion on any of this. Yes, Counselor Hawk and then Counselor McKim.
Yes, I thought at our last meeting, or one of the last meetings, that we asked the Parks Department, could they, if they've already found a mower that they could use, since the other one is that they're using right now, seems to be on its last legs, maybe it would be better to go ahead and get that now. If she can still get it. It's so hard to get some of these pieces of equipment. So I thought that's what we had planned to do.
And Ms. Whitmer said in the chat, Parks will ask for additional appropriation from the Council on September twenty-eighth. It may not be in the bond. So it sounds like they're thinking in the same lines.
Right, that's great. And the other thing I'd asked the Treasurer, when she was talking about her needs for microfilm, as I might use the right term, if if she had it now, could they go ahead and begin that work? And she said, absolutely. And I said, she might, you know, and we might want to consider letting her have that equipment so her staff can go ahead and get that project started.
I haven't seen a request come from her with regards to an additional or, you know, moving forward with that at this time.
Right, I'm just, I'll speak with her again about it, if if everybody thinks that would be a good idea. I mean, it's, it's really got like six and one half dozen the other because it's still going to be coming out of our cash.
Yeah, go, go for it. Definitely, I think, talk to her and Michelle, we may be getting another request there for an upcoming meeting. Mr. McKim?
I guess the only other thing I wanted to call attention to, it's not, it wasn't technically a one-time request or a new personnel, but that just, I think we all need to be aware of when we're looking at the budget, is one reason why it does seem quite a bit different from last year is because of the election. And, you know, the the election budget request is almost a million dollars higher than it was last year. And that shouldn't come as a big surprise, since we don't have a, an election this year and we have a major election next year, so that's but it's just for everybody to keep in mind that that's, that, you know, a million dollar, almost nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. The increase in the the frozen levy is comes solely out of the fact that we have an election this year, or in in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, and I was, thanks for that point, because, and it reminded me, I was gonna ask about this earlier. Are we are we trending the way that we had originally intended to with kind of when we developed that election fund and kind of the idea was, you know, we would have it, we would fund it so that it would smooth out the peaks and valleys associated with these. Are we, are we still in line with that goal and accomplishing that goal with with how the election fund is shaping up?
I believe so, and, but I will work with Bree and, and, you know, find out the revenues and see where we're at, but I was thinking we had worked on that and was keeping a close eye on it, so, yeah, I'll check on that.
We will definitely need to shift revenue into it, though, because if you remember from the 4B, that's the one that actually came out as negative. So we, yeah, we definitely need to to shift some. Now, you know, the other thing is, we did see some reversions last year. We may see reversions in that fund as well. They don't necessarily, you know, they don't have to spend all the money, and they don't spend all the money if they don't need it, so. But, yeah, we definitely will have to shift some levy into the, into that fund.
I mean, fortunately, it's not like negative thirty percent. It was negative three percent. For the most part, I think it's working as intended, but it's something that we need to be aware of and as Mr. McKim mentioned earlier, and as we're going through this process.
One thing I was gonna add to that, I I actually talked with the clerk today, and one thing that, you know, just as we're talking about the the increase over last year's in in funding, even though next year is a midterm election, it's still like a presidential election in the way that the voting happens and the way that voting is operated, at least for the last couple of cycles, and so I'm not, I I don't recall what years prior, like twenty fourteen or so were like, but I think we're sort of in an every-two-years presidential election kind of operation for most of that.
I agree. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, well, I think that will, that will wrap up that agenda item, and now we can move on to item number four, which is the WIS job descriptions and classification and next steps. How do we want to kind of address this with the two thousand twenty-two budget? Michelle, what what are we hoping to accomplish on this one? I I think, as I stated earlier, I was hoping that, you know, we could get some kind of a sense of how the Council is feeling and, you know, to what level we might want to move forward with the WIS recommendations, if at all. Is that what you're hoping to to kind of get a better awareness of through this?
Yeah, I I would like to just kind of see how you're headed and just how to just keep pushing forward with, you know, presenting the budgets to you, so. Margie, I know that her and I talked. Margie, do you have anything you want to add?
I'm sorry, I had trouble getting myself unmuted. Okay, so, yeah, I think the same thing. I think the Council has to fundamentally make the decision. If you want to adopt these job descriptions as presented, if you're gonna do that now, and how you're gonna make decisions regarding the sort of the what, how to implement the additional salary increases. So, you know, there's, and Marty knows that we've gone through this before, so there are different ways you could do it. You know, if you don't feel like you could pay the entire one point seven million dollars and implement the study completely, there are different methods you could do that. So you might want to talk about how you want to do that. I will, I will remind you that the compensation schedules are are considered part of a whole system. So to the extent that you implement, let's say, one category and you don't implement the others, you will skew the 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 differences between the categories. So we we regularly hear when, let's say, a comment category is increased, that the, their supervisors now are very close in salary to those people they're supervising. So you you must think about the unintended consequences that you might have if you don't implement things equitably across all categories. Go ahead, Kim.
And I was just gonna say, and we saw that when we increased the deputy salaries as well as the jail, because with that increase, then they came back because of the their supervisors were very close. And so, you know, then we had to come back and and bump those up to, so that it was more equitable.
Right, yeah, so just think about that when you do things. It may be more, you might want to think about implementing a percentage of each recommendation, so, you know, do it in percentages, which tends to be sort of more equitable across categories. The other thing that I would encourage you to do and authorize immediately, you could do it tonight, is for us to go ahead and and make any changes that WIS has recommended in terms of the FLSA category changes. It doesn't have a dollar figure attached, but we have had a professional review of the FLSA categories. This isn't a discretionary thing in terms of like a department gets to pick if they want their person to be exempt or not. It's based on an understanding of the law, and WIS has done that for us. So I would recommend that you might want tonight to go ahead and and authorize us to make those changes in the salary ordinance for the FLSA, changes to be done immediately. And if that raises any questions for you guys, I'm happy to try to answer them, or Kim can as well. It may be as well, you know, obviously, a decision to not do anything is a decision, and that may be that you decide at this point, you don't have enough information, you don't know how, let's say, annexation is gonna turn out, you don't know, you know, what you want to do. If you decide that you you don't want to implement any part of the WIS study at this point, but you want to postpone that, that's something you can do, obviously. Keep in mind, you can change employee salaries any time of the year. You can only change an elected official salaries during the sort of, the year before the salary takes effect. You cannot change a, an elected official's salary in the year in which it's been set. So you'll want to make those changes, if any, before January one.
Thank you. I want to go in order of the hands that I've seen, so I saw McKim first, then Hawk, Munson, Iverson, Deckard.
Okay, thanks. So first of all, on the FLSA exempt status, I completely agree with with Margie. I would have no problem at all with, you know, if we wanted to actually pass that this, you know, at this meeting, that is, that is a matter of law and not of departmental preference or or policy or anything like that. So, yeah, I would have no problem with that at all. You know, I guess the, when we decide on how to move forward, there's the small picture and there's the big picture. You know, the small picture is we still, you know, I I get that there are some very specific issues in the Highway Department, for example, with some of the recommendations, the Prosecutor's Office, I'm sure, I'm sure there are some other departments that may have, the Surveyors Office that have some very specific concerns with their classification. You know, personally, I would like to kind of pump that to to PAC if if at all possible. You know, I'm not, not to be mean, but to put that off on Trenton His crew, but, you know, I would kind of like the small, honestly, the specifics to be referred to committee. And I think what our job is prior to budget is to come up with the big philosophy, and that's, you know, WIS, for example, left us with three potential options. Obviously, there's, there's more if we want to come up with them, but you know, I am, I am, I'm torn in terms of big picture. I look at those numbers that I showed earlier, and, you know, I I can't deny that it makes me a little nervous. And when I think of Owen County, and I want to make sure that we think, you know, that we make sure that we, we always have have enough reserves to be able to continue our operations. But on the other hand, I feel pretty strongly like this is not the time in our local economy or our global economy to be putting on the brakes. I I feel like at this point, there there are resources coming in to make sure that we are able to take care of our employees, take care of our residents, and we should use those resources to to do it. And we have a recommendations from a, from a consultant that we've put a fair amount of effort into, that they have made this, these recommendations. And they have also, you know, showed how we have been inconsistent in in maintaining our our salary and our compensation system. I think this is an opportunity to to make sure we we continue to do, we we start doing it right and we continue to do it right. So I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I am still in favor of implementing I guess what I'm saying is I am still in favor of implementing at least part of the WIS recommendations writ large, with, without getting into any of the individual recommendations. The, uh, the WIS recommendations writ large, I, you know, I, I could easily see doing fifty percent this year and fifty percent next year as a reasonable, um, starting point. But I'll defer here and hear what everybody else says.
Hawk?
My turn?
Yes.
What, what I would suggest if it's gonna be, uh, difficult to make that decision right now because we don't really know what's gonna happen with the annexation, whatever. Uh, but I think that we could, uh, decide how much money we have to put toward it. And that's sort of like what you're saying, Councilmember McKim. Uh, determine a dollar amount that we can budget to do it. And then maybe we could go ahead and do the appropriation, maybe put it in the council budget someplace so that we know we've got it set aside. And then when we have more information about what's gonna happen with the city or whatever, then we'll be able to determine how to split up that money that we've set aside. Because if we can't do it all, let's figure out how we can do it and make it equitable a- across the way because we can't just do one group because we've done, you know, that just passes everything up. So it might only be a, a portion of each ladder.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Munson? Do you have to unmute?
Yeah. I thought, um, a percentage was, uh, the ideal way to go, especially when it doesn't look like it would be possible to implement the full WIS recommendation. And I agree with Counselor McKim on, um, having, uh, having PAC take care of the individual, uh, concerns within departments about, uh, classifications because we can't, as a full council, it's very difficult for us to do that. But, what interests me is knowing whether, how much, how much our, um, general fund, uh, savings and rainy day, uh, levels have grown over the years. Are we continually growing those? And is there a comfort level that we can gain from looking at this? And so, um, I think that would be helpful for us to know. Um, especially as we are still headed into, uh, unknown territory economically.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Iverson?
Thank you. Um, so I know, one of the things that I think we've really seen here is that, um, that makes me happy and, and encourages me is, is that when we invest in people, good things happen. And I think that this is a great way to do that. I, I, I just, it's, it's really encouraging to see, to read this report and to get the feedback from the departments and just to see how the impact on this is, is gonna be, um, I think there's gonna be really good returns on this investment. Things that make me nervous are the decrease in lit this year and the fact that we're heading into a winter with the Delta variant and maybe the Lambda variant and, uh, the impact that's gonna have on our economy. Um, I'm also worried about some of the things that we talked about as we were looking at the big picture about the, uh, the ebbs and flows of that, uh, maximum levy growth quotient and, you know, how future years are gonna look different than current years and, and that sort of thing. And then of course, um, you know, the, the unintended consequences. I really like, um, options one or two that, that WIS pointed out, that's that phased implementation. I think that gives us a little bit of wiggle room after year one to review what, what's been happening and to address some of the concerns that Ms. Rice, uh, pointed out. And, uh, I, I don't think I'm at it at any point where I would recommend a specific action, uh, tonight. I mean, I, of course, I, I, I like and I'm in favor of the, um, the FMLA, uh, approvals, but, um, that's kind of where my thinking is at this point.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Iverson. Mr. Deckard?
Thank you very much. And I appreciate all the, all the comments, uh, that have been made so far. I, my sentiment falls, uh, is sort of like a lot of you and, and particularly around what Counselor McKim was saying about, um, this is particularly a time not to put a break on things that affect, uh, the, the local economy and particularly our employees, uh, the folks that work for this county. I, I don't like using the word our employees, but that did come out, but I, the folks that, that represent this county well on those front lines are something I think that are near and dear to all of our hearts as we think about, you know, what, what do we do to, to incentivize keeping them? What do we do to make sure that they get what they need in turn for what they give to, to the folks of the community? Um, I am not tied to one particular rung because, um, I, I'd like to do as much as I could. To be very flat out honest, I think that's probably a sentiment of most of us. But at the same time, I want to make sure that we safely have a place to do that, do things in, in, uh, in future years so that we know, um, that we're on solid foundation like Counselor Munson. I wouldn't mind seeing what is the history of revenues that have come in? Because, you know, over a period of time, you have to ask yourself, you know, is it, are, are there other opportunities there that maybe those funds could stay in general for needs or weren't needed in, in general, et cetera? Um, so I, I, I guess a question that I have, and I want to, maybe Ms. Rice could, uh, answer this. On these options, particularly option one, where WIS is saying the fifty percent route, they're, they're not saying you do like half the chart, they're saying fifty percent equally across all of the chart. Okay.
Yes, that's right. Yeah. So they essentially laid out three options. Option one was to fund a pay adjustment to the external market for all positions over a two-year period. Then option two was to fund pay adjustments over a two-year or three-year period by capping the adjustments at a flat dollar amount. Um, for example, place all employees on new pay grids, but cap the pay adjustments at five thousand in year one and four thousand in year two. Option three was to establish the county grids at a percentage of the external midpoint salary. And the example was, um, so say you're gonna pay ninety percent of what the external market shows. Uh, and then you fund the salary pay adjustments accordingly. So you would pick your percentage and then say for every position, we're gonna fund it at that percentage of this. So everybody in the county is treated the same in that they're being paid a, that whatever their external market is, they're getting paid this percentage of that.
Okay. And then I, I, I guess the final comment I'd make and then I'll be quiet because I wanted to hear more from others. But, um, there are details that have been brought up by department heads, as, as so many of you've said. And, um, I, I don't want to speak for the other two PAC members because they are, they're good leaders on their own and they're very, they're, they're wiser than me on most of this. But, um, I think PAC can work through things. I think some of these details are pretty, um, detailed and maybe a little bit more strenuous for solution. And so I wanna, we probably soberly would have to approach those as we work through those with department heads and, and try to determine things. Um, and they might have greater comments on that. But if they go, both go running out, you'll know that, um, we're not able to work through things. But no, I'm optimistic that, that we could figure something out.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. It appears that we're all in, um, alignment that we want to make some progress with these, uh, recommendations from WIS. It was a, a big endeavor. Uh, we, we all took that process very seriously, put a lot of time and resources into it. And I thought they produced some good recommendations for the county, and I want to make some significant progress on that. Um, for me, that's, that's, uh, a, a personal goal of mine that, that I hope, uh, we can achieve. Um, I would, I, I don't want us to kind of, you know, stall out here tonight and uh, not be able to provide Michelle with, with something to kind of work on going forward with getting, um, uh, budgets prepared and, and so forth. I really liked, uh, Councilmember Hawk's suggestion that, you know, maybe we take, uh, an allocation and kind of set it into the council budget. Um, I like Mr. McKim's suggestion of, you know, doing a fifty percent, um, you know, in that range. I don't know how everyone's feeling about that. I'd just like to throw this out there. And I'm thinking, you know, if fifty percent of one point seven million, what is that, about eight hundred and fifty thousand or so? Um, you know, just to be on the safe side, maybe set aside a million. And just put that in, in the council budget for now and see how things look, uh, as, and see how things shape up. How do, how do people think about that?
Too risky? I was going, I was gonna say the exact, yeah, I mean, that, that, I, I think Counselor Hawk's suggestion is exactly the right way to approach it because, uh, and I'm interested in hearing Michelle's opinion of this because, you know, to some degree, the timeline is driven by the specific requirements of having to get budgets and get budgets advertised and that sort of thing. But this kind of, that solution does give us more time to, uh, work out the, the, the details, but yet also demonstrates the employees that we're serious, that we are actually appropriating the money and putting it in the budget to, to implement the WIS study. Um, that it's not just a, a promise that we'll do it someday in the future, that we're actually allocating the money. So I, yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a great idea to maybe just put a million dollars in the council budget as a placeholder, which will give us a little time to work out the, the details and also work out, you know, the, the, WIS gave us three options. Um, you know, fifty fifty i- is an, uh, is certainly one way of looking at it. The other is just we appropriate a million dollars, then we figure out what percentage a million dollars gets, gets us to, which is gonna be more than fifty and less than a hundred. Um, but I, I like that solution. And I'm, I'm, I'm interested in hearing from Kim whether she thinks that would work as far as giving her direction to move forward on the budget within the time constraints.
I, I think, um, I can work with that. Uh, my only question is, um, if we put the entire amount in general fund, how that would, um, affect the funds like health or aviation or that kind of thing, because we do have to advertise. So I don't want to lock them in to a certain amount and then not be able to, um, um, increase if you decide to increase. So I think what I would, uh, like to do is, um, maybe put, um, go with a, a million overall for the entire, um, workbook. And, uh, and, and see how each fund that has, that's outside of general or lit or, you know, that kind of thing and make sure to ensure that we, uh, have enough for advertising.
I can see that.
But not go over that million.
Yeah. Ms. Rice?
Million total.
Yeah, one of the things that I, I think I want to say, just because I don't know that Kim Shell's gonna say this, but, um, every time, you know, if, uh, she's preparing the budgets, um, if we change salaries, let's say that we decide to do fifty percent, just throw that out there, of the WIS, um, she would have to change every budget. Am I right, Kim? Change every budget, change the salary ordinance accordingly. One thing, you know, you might think about doing, um, is, and, and Kim, you just throw something out if you think this is a crazy idea, but, you know, is, um, what if you said, I want to see what, you know, let's say conservatively, I want to do this over a three-year period. I wanted thirty-three percent um, of the WIS in twenty twenty-two and twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, what would those numbers look like if you plugged in, uh, thirty-three, thirty-three percent? I'm just throwing that out there. Um, so that Kim can kind of get an idea for advertisement. You guys get an idea of what that sort of looks like in terms of dollars, and then you figure out where to appropriate that if that's where you want to go. But I know that Kim's thinking about how many times am I gonna have to change these numbers? Are you thinking that, Kim? Like?
Yeah, uh, but I mean, if we go with like, um, Counselor McKim said, and we just put an amount in the council's budget that, which would encompass all of general fund. Or sorry, Counselor Hawk, uh, you know, and so, you know, if it's in general fund, then we can move it anywhere. Um, but, you know, but that's just for general fund. So what I was, I don't want to lock, for example, the health department to a certain amount, and then we can't grow beyond what was advertised. So that's why it's, I wanted to be able to have that flexibility to add to those accounts as well, but not go over, um, as long as I've got flexibility to, to ensure that we've got that amount.
And, uh,
Go ahead, Ms. Hawk.
Michelle, um, what we might want to do is add a line in those budgets, those different funds so that it is set there as an aside so that it doesn't look like it's going to be able to be moved around. It's just setting there as a placeholder. But I think you're absolutely right because since we can't move from one fund in the frozen levy to another fund in the frozen levy in any given year because then it has to be paid back within the same year. So I think that's absolutely appropriate.
Okay. And I also want, you know, going back to having PAC, um, look at certain items. I just want to, you know, just reinforce what, you know, um, WIS said that we, we hired them to do a job and they evaluated and reviewed the classifications. Um, I just don't want you guys getting back into that old habit of not doing things correct and kind of thing. So, you know, just because a department wants it done, doesn't mean that's correct. So I just want to make sure that when we do go to PAC and, and review this, that, you know, just because a, a department doesn't like, um, what happened or the way it was classified, then, um, then we work through that process. But I think we need to work through that process with WIS and not independently of them because that's who we hired to set us straight, and I want to stay straight.
Makes sense. Um, Mr. McKim, did you have your hand up? Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, that was from the previous discussion.
No problem. Ms. Hawk?
Uh, yes. Uh, I think what happened the other day when the department heads were waiting to discuss the WIS study with us, and we had specific departments saying they had some concern about, you know, thinking that maybe there was a misunderstanding or something of the sort. But we had so much on our plate that we just didn't hear them all out. But they, they, and so I don't think it should go back to PAC. I think it should come right back to the council as a whole and hear out this, what was it? There wasn't that many department heads that had concern that they were not being heard. And I think they want to be heard. That does not mean that we have to agree with them, but we should at least hear them. And I don't think, I mean, it's already been to PAC. Just come back to council as a whole. And, and hear those, whatever, have it down in writing, the, the different departments that think there's a concern, uh, a major concern that, that there's some kind of misunderstanding and get that worked out. Get it in writing in advance and then we'll get it worked out before we have the meeting.
I, I think I would like to have Margie speak to that because we have had an issue with highway. And, um, I think Margie could probably pull up the email quicker than I could with regards to how WIS addressed that when there is a concern or a mistake that a department feels like has happened.
Yeah, so, so just recently, we had a nice conversation with the department who, um, and the, sort of, it was highway. There was something that, um, seemed off. It seemed as if it was going, it was a mistake and that the sort of conversation we had as a group, and it was highway and Kim and I, and, and, um, we, and I think Angie and Jeff might have been there, but we were talking and then we ended up calling WIS and saying, how do you want us to handle this? Uh, do you want, are you recommending that the council adopt what they've recommended, uh, what you've recommended, and then go through the process to make changes if they need to be changed? Or, uh, do you want us to fix things right now? Or do you want us to fix things right now? They said, because, because if I, I posited, if you don't fix it now, you might be adopting something that you know is incorrect. They actually said, go ahead and adopt what we've recommended, and if there are issues, then this is great practice for you to follow your procedures and go through the, the motions and make those changes. And so they, they essentially said, if you don't stop and cut it off now, you will never make a decision. You'll just be constantly sort of working through these issues department by department. So they said, go ahead and adopt it and then, then work your process. And, and so I think that, you know, that's, that's the consultant's recommendation. We know that we have highway, that there's a, something that was, you know, is, could change the way that something is classified. And Lisa's here, Lisa can speak to this if she wants to. And, and, you know, we, again, ask Allison, and she talked to Addy, and, and they talked to Kent Irwin, and they said, you know, we've done the job that you guys paid us to do. And so we're done with the study. We've made our recommendations. We're recommending you adopt them. And then adopt the, the maintenance plan and those procedures, and to the extent that you have issues that you need to work through, then go, go through your process. I will say that to Marty Hawke's point about what the PAC and the council should do, you know, it may be that the council wants to have another, another session and, and go through that. That's your call. I do think that something like the, what the, what was recommended with the financial positions, you know, they essentially gave you two questions. How much time is really needed to be dedicated to, to the financial functions in each department? And could the financial positions be restructured and consolidated? We have grown from five to 13 financial positions in 15 years. We grew that. So that's the kind of thing I think could be tackled in a PAC meeting or in several PAC meetings. And then that could be brought forward as a recommendation to the council. I think that that work would be much more efficient done by PAC. You guys can all weigh in on whether you think that's to be true, but, but if you have, let's say, you know, more financial management positions than the county, than any average county needs, and you want to, through attrition or some other way, reduce the number of financial managers over a period of time, that's a recommendation that PAC could work through and, and recommend to the council. And also every time, think about this, every time you get a new position requested of you and you allocate dollars to that, those are dollars that you could be using to implement the WIS study. And I know you probably know that, but we just got to sort of keep a tally of that. So do you continue to grow the county workforce? Or do you dedicate the resources to paying, you know, the existing workforce? So tough decisions.
Yeah, a lot to work through here. Mr. Iverson?
Yeah, as, as I'm hearing this, it, it strikes me that the procedures are laid out in a maintenance plan that was given to us by WIS. And I wanted to ask Ms. Rice if there are any changes or any issues that, you know, county legal has with the maintenance plan that was recommended by them, or were, if, if, if there's any changes from what that document has been given to us.
No, I, I think that it's, I would recommend that you adopt their maintenance plan and you, and you begin working through it. And to the extent that we find difficulty managing through that process or departments feel that there's some difficulty, then, you know, we can always talk to WIS about it. But let's remember that they represent a lot of, you know, they work with a lot of counties across the state of Indiana. And county government has, has been doing this work for a couple hundred years. Not that we've, you know, can't change and shouldn't change and can't evolve and develop. But county governments are pretty similar across the state of Indiana. Some are smaller, some are larger. But the functions of county government are pretty much the same in every county. And so I think the recommendations are pretty solid and should be, should be workable for us as a county government.
Excellent. I just wanted to make sure.
Ms. Ridge?
Good evening. So actually, this is the first time that I've heard the outcome of our meeting on, on last week. So I'm, I'm, I can say I'm very disappointed. I thought we had a good meeting. I was, I am not a department head that came forward just to say I'm upset with the outcome of this report. I think it's a great basis. I've been here since day one of 1997 of the original report. We found factual errors in job descriptions. WIS admitted to it on the phone that they had overlooked some of the duties. But you want us to adopt those and then as a department head, go through and work through these problems? I find that really time consuming for a department head. When it's not just that I'm upset, I'm trying to make sure that something is not overlooked and it was stated in that, in that day. Why would we want to pass something that we know is incorrect? We have a union that we deal with. We're very supportive of that union. And the way that these classifications came out, it, it's, it's not correct. And if it's something that I missed on job descriptions, I take full blame for that, but trying to look through 50-plus job descriptions with everything else. But again, WIS had stated that day that they did overlook some items and some job descriptions, so I, I, I guess that's just my concern. The only other thing I wanted to state was, we have gone through our numbers and numbers over and over again in all three of our budgets, Stormwater, Cume Bridge, MBH. We are very supportive of, supportive of whatever action the council takes on the WIS report and moving forward, whether it be percentages or anything. We know that we can fund these increases of what WIS recommendations are, and we're totally supportive of our employees, especially to try and retain our, our good employees. But that's all I really wanted to say. Again, I, I'm just now finding out what the result of that phone call was. So that's, that's all I got.
And, and that's my fault. I, I have been swamped and I don't have as much assistance as I did before. And so I am finding that I am not keeping up on emails and getting things out timely. So that's my fault, Lisa, and I do apologize for that. I did forward that email to you just now, so that is my fault. Sorry.
I can, let me just read to you, and I, I haven't been sharing my screen, but I can read to you the email from YGO originally. It said, Allison Collins wrote, I'm emailing you to address the situation. I'm making changes before the council adopts the job descriptions, compensation plans, pay grids, and maintenance plan. Our firm has completed the tasks that we were asked to do by the county. We have sent the job descriptions to the department heads, elected officials, two or three times to ensure accuracy. We understand that things can be missed, and while we do not necessarily fault anyone, we cannot make any further changes at this time. The reason for not making any changes is simply the fact that Monroe County is operating on their current system, such as their current job descriptions, compensation plans, and grids. What we presented to the council this past Tuesday is still proposed. Before any changes being made at this stage would be made to the current system, not the proposed. Looking specifically at the highway department, they're still part of a contract. Any change being made will have to be negotiated on. And again, I've, I've got thoughts on that, but I think that's more of a legal issue. But again, we understand the concern, but if changes are wanting or needing to be made to the proposed descriptions and compensation plans, they'll first have to be adopted by the council. And the council will also have to adopt the maintenance plan, which will allow for changes to be made in an orderly way. This is a great time for the council to exercise their rightful duty and to demonstrate to all the department heads and elected officials that they're going to take charge and own the project, but also listen to the department head and elected officials' concerns and instruct them how to follow the process, or to follow the process of the maintenance plan if changes are needed. So, you know, they feel like, and, and there's probably a part of this that is the project ran longer than we had originally anticipated. And I'm sure that we have, have they've, we've, you know, we've taken up more hours than probably they anticipated that, when they quoted this project for us. And so they're saying, go ahead and adopt these proposals and then work your system. There's a change that needs to be made. You can, this is a great practice for getting those changes made.
Mr. McKim?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, we, we can still continue down this road as much as anybody else wants, but I really want to make sure that we at least leave tonight with that kind of a, a figure to give Michelle to work into the, the budgets as, you know, essentially adopting Counselor Hawke's proposal to kind of earmark the, a certain amount of funds for implementing these WIS raises and give us more time to work out the, the details, but, but committing to, you know, to, to those funds. And so I, you know, I don't, we've heard a couple of different numbers suggested, you know, a million would get us closer to 100% than 50%, which is, or it would get us closer, it would get us beyond 50%, I guess. You know, I, I, I could see 1.2 million dollars, but I do think it's important that we leave this meeting with that kind of instruction.
Yeah. Is anybody opposed to a million? Okay, let's, let's go with that for now. Yes, Mr. Deckard?
And I, and if I am hearing sentiment correctly, generally, there's not opposition to that per se, some of the other details. The dollars are not, that is not opposition beyond this council.
I certainly support the dollars. I, I would go higher than 1 million, but, but I mean, that's, that's a reasonable and prudent figure, and like I said, it does get us beyond 50% of, and one of their options, their, their number one option was do it over two years. So we're certainly well within that, that recommendation.
Yeah, Ms. Hawke?
Yes, and you were going to go ahead and move forward this evening, I thought, having to agree to the recommendations on FLSA.
Yes.
If you want, I can make that motion.
I would do, I would love to hear that.
Okay, council, I move we amend the 2021 salary ordinance to make the following changes to, in the FLSA status. Clerk chief deputy from exempt to excluded, coroner deputy from exempt to non-exempt, family court mediation director from non-exempt to exempt, official court reporter from exempt to excluded, health financial manager from exempt to non-exempt, senior environmental health specialist from exempt to non-exempt, assistant jail commander, commander from exempt to excluded, jail facilities manager from exempt to non-exempt, jail commander from exempt to excluded, recorder chief deputy from exempt to excluded, sheriff chief deputy from exempt to excluded, sheriff captain of operations from exempt to excluded, sheriff financial director slash office administrator from exempt to non-exempt, surveyor GIS coordinator from exempt to non-exempt, chief deputy treasurer from exempt to excluded, veteran service officer from non-exempt to exempt, YSB financial and personnel coordinator from exempt to non-exempt, probation office administrator from exempt to non-exempt, and clerks administrator from exempt to non-exempt.
Okay, there is a motion and a second on Mr., well, a second on Mr. McKim's motion. Do we have any discussion or questions from council?
Just that those numbers are those, those recommendations came right word for word off of the WIS report.
Yep. From our HR consultant. Any, any discussion or questions from council members before we check with the public? Okay, seeing none from council, is there any public comment on this motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote on the motion to update the FLSA status of certain employees.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spinmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wilts is not present, and Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Okay, very good. So I think that will conclude item four and perhaps item five. Are there any other items that we needed to discuss this evening, Michelle? And does that take care?
I don't have anything further.
Okay. All right, well, seeing none, let's see if we have any council comments at this time. Do we have any council comments? Mr. Iverson, yes?
Hi, I'm gonna share my screen real quick here and get this up. Let me see. Oh, there it is. So can y'all see my screen?
Yes.
All right, so we are, as of tomorrow, going to be in National Recovery Month, and we are going to be painting the town purple in honor of that National Recovery Month. This is an event that's going to happen this Friday here at the courthouse from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And it's gonna have family-friendly games, food trucks, music. It's gonna be a really great time and really encourage my colleagues on the council and staff at the, the county to attend, as well as all the public watching. You can find more details. There's a Facebook event, and I know both the health department and the, the county commissioners have shared this out on their social media, as have I. So I'll look forward to seeing everyone on the third, on the county courthouse.
Excellent. Thanks for that update, Mr. Iverson. Any other comments from council? I was just going to check with Ms. Shell. Can we get just a final rundown here of what our budget workshop, work session schedule is gonna look like for the second week of, or the third week of September?
Do you mean like going through the agenda itself, or?
No, 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 just the dates.
Sorry. Okay, council will be meeting in work sessions on Wednesday, September the 8th, beginning at 5:00 PM. They'll meet again on September, Thursday, September 9th at 5:00 PM. Then we move to the following week, which will then be Monday, September the 13th, Tuesday, September the 14th, and then Wednesday, September the 15th, all beginning at 5:00 PM.
Yep, so this is a little bit of a, little bit of a different arrangement this year. We, the idea was, we take Friday off, knowing that there'll probably be some changes and adjustments that staff will need to make, and they can use that day on Friday to do that. We won't get stuck in another six-hour Friday budget hearing like we did last year, and then we can resume things on Monday, following week, and get everything wrapped up by Wednesday. So that will, I think that'll work out really well and, and looking forward to all of those important meetings that we have coming up. Mr. Iverson, did you have a question?
Yes, at, at one point, I thought I heard that we'll be meeting in person for these budget sessions. Of course, today, the governor extended the public health order, so will these be virtual or in person?
These will be virtual. We've always planned for the budget sessions to be virtual. Per the DLGF, the council has to meet in person for the public hearing, and they also have to meet for the adoption. So those don't take place until October, and that is not a, an if or they have to be in person unless the governor shuts the state down.
Any other questions or any other comments from council members? Before we adjourn. Okay. Well, seeing no more council comments, we'll adjourn this meeting, and we'll see you guys next time. Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody.